So push the.
Did you guys hear that over there about the lights? But you said you just push the green button and it turns on and you can put the data in.
I don't want anybody to hear me. This is an open public meeting. It has been so advertised. And I'll ask Mrs. Coleman to call the roll.
Mrs. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Faupel.
Here.
Mrs. Butchko.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Fink.
Here.
Mrs. Marmian.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Stotts.
Here.
Okay, I'll ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance. The flag is still in the back of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there is no executive session, so we move immediately to Dr. McDowell, I think. Is this your presentation? Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. All of you. Thank you for being here, and thank you to those who are watching online, live streaming. Our continued theme in terms of reopening has been restarting and reinventing our schools, learning in the time of COVID and beyond, not allowing COVID to be an excuse while we don't move forward, and aggressively push for student growth and achievement. We've organized the slides today. Some of them will be a repeat. A few of the slides will be a repeat of what was covered in the community information sessions. Some will be a brief summary of some of the content that was released in the August 4th reopening plan. By the end of this week, we will be releasing the updated reopening plan as well as the FAQ generated from all of the community information sessions. So we'll dig into the presentation for the board this evening about where we are so far. So our collective mission is by embracing the strength inherent in a diverse body, our districts will inspire students to develop confidence, critical thinking, creativity and perseverance, and we ultimately encourage all students to focus on their academic and personal growth one day at a time. So in order for us to prepare for a safe return, schools need to monitor a few things. But when we think about safe return, it's not enough just to open, but stay open. And this requires us to think strategically and to be very intentional about the things and the decisions that we make in order to not have to start and stop, because that is a major disruption to the learning environment for our students as well as our staff. So there's four core areas that we're using in order to guide the decision-making process: community transmission, vaccination coverage, testing and outbreaks. So we're also leveraging data and statistical information from a wide range of sources. The most recent data that's coming in is from the American Academy of Pediatrics as well as the Children's Hospital Association. As of August 19th, 4.9 million children have tested positive for COVID-19, with over 180,000 cases last week and 204,000 cases this week. These surpassed the surge levels of last year. These also account for 22.4% of all reported COVID cases in the United States. So it is definitely something to be aware of, but not something for us to be fearful of, because what we believe is we have a multi-layered approach that will help us not just safely open, but stay open. When thinking about transmission, one of the go-to pieces of data that we use is regional statistics around the COVID activity level index for the southwest region, which includes Camden County, Gloucester County, Burlington County and Salem County. We are in moderate status. Currently, the case rate is 17.64 cases per 100,000, which as a community, that translates into high transmission. So as a region, we are moderate, but as a community, specifically a county, we are in high transmission. We also leverage the CDC's County View tracker, which shows that Camden County is red due to the case rate. In addition, we're also looking at vaccinations. We're looking at vaccinations for Camden County, and we have requested vaccinations broken down by unique school community of Collingswood, Oakland, as well as Woodland, so that we can continue to make informed decisions. But for Camden County, currently, the percentage of the population that is eligible for vaccination that has received one dose is 62.6%. Fully vaccinated is 54.7%. The positive of our students that are 12 and over, who are also eligible, one dose is 73.4%, and fully vaccinated is 64.2%. We'll continue to monitor this. We will continue to provide opportunities to support vaccination. Some of our associations are even in the process of planning to host and sponsor vaccination clinics, because we do believe that the vaccination approval for children under the age of 12 will probably be coming sometime in late October, early November. So the shift of focus will continue to be, how do we make sure that our children have that extra layer of protection? Testing. Because we have now shifted and moved into high transmission status, the guidance recommends having routine, random, sample-sized testing in all schools. What this looks like is that schools will be seeking, with approval from parents naturally, will be seeking to randomly test 10% of students across every campus. The purpose of testing is to identify whether or not virus prevalence is within your schools. And if it's within your schools, then you can provide targeted levels of support, which still further allows you to remain open, because you've identified where a potential hotspot could be, and then you're taking a scalpel rather than taking a blunt instrument to this challenge. There will be more information in the opening days of school. We will probably be planning to begin testing sometime in October, after we've had a chance to engage parents more deeply on process, logistics and overall strategy. But initial information will be coming within the first weeks of school. We have partnered with a vendor that will be able to provide a host of services, including pooled testing as well as rapid testing, in addition to health and safety information, as well as being able to provide vaccinations for those who choose it. Monitoring of outbreaks, I preface at the beginning that roughly 4.6 million children so far have tested positive for COVID. As of today, that number has increased to 4.8 million. So 4.8 million since the onset, with 204,000 new cases within the last seven days. So what this means is, is that children cases. Children cases have increased exponentially. The data anecdotally suggests that due to southern schools beginning sooner, that has been a large contributing factor to the increase in COVID cases. In many of those states where masks are not fully utilized, that is not the case here. We do not expect to have that level of surge, although we are keeping it monitored in the event that a situation presents itself. So the Delta variant, we've heard a lot about the Delta variant on television, on social media, in social circles. So what do we know so far? What we know so far is that the Delta variant is more contagious. It's up to two times more contagious than the previous three variants that are in circulation within our community. Some data suggests that it might, it might cause more severe illness in unvaccinated people, and therefore, unvaccinated individuals are the greatest concern. Fully vaccinated people have had breakthrough infections, but a report was released today that there is inconsistent data from the CDC, because they were not tracking all breakthrough cases. They were only tracking breakthrough cases with severe illness. So there is some taking to task that will need to take place even with the CDC. So back to how do we successfully start school and stay open? So we have shared in several venues the 10 priorities that we have used to inform our planning for restarting and reinventing, closing the digital divide, strengthening distance and blended learning, assessing what students need and where students are, ensuring that there are supports for social-emotional learning, redesigning schools for stronger relationships, emphasizing culturally relevant and culturally responsive learning, providing expanded learning time, establishing wraparound supports with a community schools model, preparing educators through targeted professional development, and then ultimately leveraging all of our available resources, both state, local and federal funds, so that we're maximizing every dollar spent to meet the growing needs and demands of our students. Sources of information include, but are not limited to, the New Jersey Department of Public Health, the New Jersey Department of Education, the CDC, the World Health Organization, the American Academy of Pediatrics, community conversations, in addition to a technical assistance group that is made up of regional community members, parents and local residents who are pediatricians, public health experts, infectious disease physicians, pediatric nurses, as well as board members, school and district leaders. So in terms of the immediate areas of health and safety, so how are we going to remain open? Will the students be required to wear masks? Per the governor's executive order, as well as the initial plans that were released on August 4th, all students, staff and visitors will be required to wear masks inside all school buildings, regardless of vaccination status, for the start of 2021-2022 school year. They emphasize the start, because, because this is an evolving situation and data is coming in at a great pace, all things are subject to change. As new information, as new data comes out, as we learn more about this very challenging disease, adjustments will be made. Masks, until the executive order is released, will not be one of the adjustments that we are in a position to make, but all other items are subject to change. Will staff be required to be vaccinated? Per the second executive order from the governor's office, all pre-K through 12 school personnel are required to be fully vaccinated by October 18th or undergo regular testing at a minimum of once to twice per week. We are very fortunate that the majority of our staff across both districts are already fully vaccinated. There is a small number of staff who are not fully vaccinated for varying reasons, some of which are choice, some are medical conditions, and some... Oh, okay. Oh, he only gives me five minutes? Some of the choices do include severe illness and medical conditions that we believe are valid and respectful. We are going to be working with all of our education associations to strike the right balance, to focus on safety, but not to impose an unnecessary burden on our faculty and staff who are not currently fully vaccinated. Health and safety, will accommodations be made? This is yes. We will continue to do as we have always done, which is collaboration between parents. So the request for accommodations is a collaboration between families and caregivers, school nurses, healthcare providers and case managers. So some of the areas that would grant exemptions or accommodations are when doing so would inhibit an individual's health, such as extreme heat, when an individual has trouble breathing, is unconscious, incapacitated or otherwise unable to remove a mask without assistance, when the student's documented medical condition or disability as reflected in their IEP or 504 plan precludes the usage of a mask, when students are engaged in eating, drinking, for the youngest of our learners, sleeping or resting or playing musical instruments, and when individuals are engaged in high-intensity aerobic or anaerobic physical activity. Those are all accommodations where masks, there will be a striking of balance of the usage of the wearing of masks. Will students need to socially distance? This is a statement that varies from campus to campus. So the purpose of socially distancing is to provide enough space so that students are not sharing air and significantly reducing the risk of the exchange of respiratory droplets between students in combination with the usage of masks. So when we talk about socially distancing, to the greatest extent possible is the disclaimer that we are using, because in some spaces, it is not feasible to socially distance three to six feet. So in most cases, that will be able to be achieved, but in some cases, it will not be able to be achieved, and that next layer of protection is the universal and correct wearing of masks. So we are planning for and have configured classrooms to maintain a minimum of three feet of physical distance between students indoors. When students are outside, masks will be optional, and students will be asked to socially distance to the greatest extent possible, but still providing opportunities for socialization. Will lunches be served at school? All cafeterias will be open to serve all students breakfast and lunch at no cost. For families who choose to pack lunch for their children, milk will be available in our cafeterias at no cost to those families. During mealtimes when masks cannot be worn, schools will implement a layered prevention strategy to help reduce children's exposure to COVID through social distancing, through assigned seats, through grab-and-go, through prepackaged meals in order to remove congregating in tight spaces or waiting in lines for long durations of time in order to pick up their lunch. So every school will have a different strategy. Health and safety. So one of the things that we are proud of between our two districts is that we have some phenomenal school nurses. State statute requires that every school district has one nurse. We are very fortunate between our two school districts to have a school, a full-time school nurse on every campus, including preschool. They will continue to help us think about how do we protect our students? How do we support our staff? How do we communicate to our families? How is the district maintaining healthy facilities? We shared this in detail through our Director of Buildings and Grounds, but the district, based on the investments from the Board of Education, the district has purchased additional personal protective equipment as well as cleaning products. MERV 13 filters have been purchased in order to trap particles, hydroxyl generators to disinfect possible contaminated areas, and bipolar ionization air purifiers have been installed in the air handling units within the cafeterias. Electrostatic sprayers have been purchased to clean high-touch areas in classrooms, and all areas will be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected on a nightly basis. All heating and ventilation equipment is monitored daily. And then all of the high-efficiency filters have been installed in all units and increased unit runtimes to increase fresh air. The normal standard is to have the units continue to run one to two hours before students occupy the facility and one to two hours after. Our districts made the decision in order to significantly increase the amount of airflow within our buildings during days of occupancy to run our air handling units 24 hours a day. What this means is, is for the Oakland school, that's five days per week, 24 hours a day, to make sure that we have the maximum amount of fresh air circulating within our building. At the middle and high school, pending weekend events, it could be up to six days and possibly seven. Teaching and learning. We have a comprehensive philosophy when it comes to teaching and learning, thinking about where do we begin, how do we make progress, and ultimately, how do we monitor that progress? I preface at the beginning of this presentation that our core emphasis is going to be student growth and achievement. We are not going to allow or make the excuse that COVID will prevent us from. And growing to a high degree. What this means is that we are going to have to be very targeted and very specific about standards that we cover, about strategies that we use, and how we are collaborating in order to share effective practices across our district to make sure that students are receiving high-quality instruction every day. We have changed our leadership approach, where there will be a heavy emphasis on coaching and development, with the majority of our time being spent in classrooms, supporting our fabulous educators to be able to meet the diverse needs of our students, especially given that some of our students have not physically been in a classroom space in a year and a half. The arts will be returning. For elementary, vocal music instrumental band and art will be resuming. And then we will have protocols to ensure the safety of students and staff when they are in their music classes. We will be, at the secondary level, we will continue to play music and sing indoors using specialized masks. And then decisions around dates, times and locations for live performances will be forthcoming. We'll be looked at on a case-by-case basis. Special services will continue to provide a variety of services to students, including supplemental support, pull-out replacement, self-contained services, pre-vocational, vocational and transitional programming. Any questions or concerns that you have about your child's IEP or related services, please reach out to the special services office to speak with your child's case manager. Our school district will continue to use a multi-tiered system of support. This is a, a system of collaboration used to identify and support students in various ways, whether they be academic, social-emotional or even behavioral. And the goal of this model is to improve student outcomes by implementing interventions, collecting data on those interventions, determining whether progress is made and making frequent adjustments to those interventions when progress is stalled. So really quickly, wanted to talk about our timeline. Back in April, we made the announcement of our reopening goal. Our reopening goal since April has been the return to full-time in-person learning. June, we announced summer programs for some elementary students as well as our secondary students at the middle and the high school levels. And August 4th, we released our reopening plan. August 9th through the 19th, our summer camps took place. We had roughly 85 of our middle and high school students participate in summer programming. And I have to say that we had students who some had been disconnected from the learning process due to being in a remote environment for over a year. They came to our camp with reservations. By day two, those were the students that were there early and stayed late. Our staff, the feedback that we received from families, from our students as well as our staff, was that this was a great first step in order to reconnect and re-engage with the learning process, re-establishing some of the relationships that had been fractured during the shutdown. And then it gave some of our, our young people, as well as our staff, a renewed energy about what to expect in the new year. We have been pretty consistent with our schools that the first marking term is a transitional time, and that the bulk of that time really needs to be spent on building relationships with our young people, assessing both formally and informally where they are and what they need, and then communicating the resources and the support needed in order to engage our students and their families, so that by that second marking term, we can really hit the ground running and begin to accelerate our academic plans. Our board meetings are taking place for both districts this week. We originally had planned on releasing our updated reopening plan, but upon reflection, we wanted to make sure that the updated. That the updated reopening plan was reflective of both public commentary as well as additional feedback that we have received from board members and community leaders. So we have adjusted our plans and we will be releasing the updated reopening plan as well as the FAQs later this week. September 1st, tomorrow, we will be welcoming back our staff and we will begin engaging them in the professional learning process. We're extremely excited about that. We are doing it in a socially distant way, so we will not be congregating 500 people in one location. We will have multiple locations to start the day, and then schools will be branching off into much smaller teams, generally by grade band, and doing the targeted work as we plan, prep and prepare to welcome our students back next week. And next week, first day of school. We're extremely excited. We are also very cognizant and very aware that there are high levels of anxiety and reservation among our communities, rightfully so. But we are each committed to making sure that our students, as well as our staff, their health and safety is on the forefront of our minds. We had a follow-up conversation today. We had one on Monday as well. The subject that seems to be of greatest concern is lunchtime, specifically at the elementary schools. We know that there is, there are reservations as it relates to lunch. The unmasking of students in spaces indoors is of great concern to a large number of families. We are currently exploring multiple options about location, duration and configuration of our cafeteria spaces in order to significantly reduce the number of students within the spaces, in order to. spaces, in order to increase the amount of physical distance between students, and then to ultimately streamline our processes in order to make sure that we are significantly reducing risk. This is an ongoing conversation. Our school leaders have done an outstanding job in order to plan for this, but as I, as I prefaced at the beginning, all plans are subject to change. Our school leaders will continue to make adjustments when they see that the initial plans are not meeting the expectations either of the school leader or of the school community. And that concludes our presentation, and I'll open up for questions from the board.
Has there been any concern in the middle school and high school about locker usage and that mass exodus that you get in the morning when they all come in and fall all over one another and they're carrying, oh, you, I mean, lockers are this big, kids are this big, and that what that's going to create? And since you're not, we're moving back to periods, students have a tendency now to probably want to go to lockers every single period, whereas we have the blocks and this stuff now. Is there any concern about that at all, or I don't know how we'd be able to be in it so frequently?
So the way the secondary campus is configured is they are increasing the number of entrances that students come in to avoid the buildup or the congregation of students. Students this year will also be using our Genesis, our Student Information System app in order to do the daily check-ins upon entry into the school. So the same questions that were asked face-to-face last year, we felt that that actually slowed down the morning arrival process. So in our middle and our high school, students will have an app, either their parents will be able to complete that digital process, and they just have to show their phone upon walking in, or they'll have to wait in the slow line. So if they want to exercise the EZ Pass, they have to go through the app, they have to answer the questions, and then they'll be able to go through the, the fast lane.
Like Disney World.
Like Disney World, Fast Pass. In terms of the way that they are managing traffic flow within the secondary campus, they have certain hallways that are one-directional in order to keep students from congregating. There will also be some direction in terms of the usage of bookbags and the usage of lockers. That will be ongoing, based on the number of students and the flow. I know that the middle school will probably have a more controlled environment. Many of our high school students are often too cool for school, and they don't bring bookbags. So if, if it poses a problem, we are confident that Principal Jenna and his leadership team will make the necessary adjustment. Yes, yes.
So Dr. McDowell, just some clarification. Testing for the students. So when we look at our elementary students and our secondary students, are we looking into simply symptom checking? Do we want to actually do COVID testing? If logistically that presents some barriers, may we look at kind of self-checking, what are some of the other, I guess, variables and options that we're going to look into in regards to that?
So the same as last year, we will be strongly encouraging our families to do the symptoms checking at home prior to sending their children to school. The second layer of protection at the elementary level will still be the symptoms checking upon arrival by our staff who are welcoming students into the space. And then that third layer is that if students are in fact demonstrating symptoms, they would then be sent to the nurse who would do a more thorough examination. In terms of testing, the recommendation for testing is a sample of 10%. What that translates is from campus to campus, anywhere from a dozen to two dozen students. Each, each school, once a week, random sampling. We do have reservations and are going to have conversations with the vendor about what should a strategy look like for our earliest learners in preschool and kindergarten. We do not want our earliest learners to be fearful or have reservations about coming to school, thinking that schools are an unsafe place, so more discussion is needed in order to strike that appropriate balance. The testing for our youngest learners, pre-K through, I believe, second grade would be different than the testing mechanism for the older students. The younger students would do simple saliva, they would not do the nasal swab. It's less irritating for, for our younger students who have small, smaller nasal passages. But then, making sure that testing in general does not become a burden to any specific school. The intended purpose of testing is to make sure that we are identifying where there is or is not viral prevalence, so that we can keep schools open.
Is there any kind of contact tracing that's going to be done differently than it was last year? I think it had to go through the county, and then it was reported back, and it was, there was a bit of a lag as to when everybody got told or whatever. Was there, has there been any change in that, or are they using the same process, or we don't know yet?
So we have not received official guidance from the Department of Health about a change in contact tracing. Contact tracing, as last year, is led by our school nurses in partnership with the Department of Health, and it will continue to, to do so. In terms of the notification, once the nurse has completed the contact tracing portion, we will notify each independent school community that there has been a confirmed case, and then all individuals who are considered a close contact will be contacted individually.
About the same process?
Will kids be bringing Chromebooks to and from school every day, or will they stay at school?
I'm going to let our, our BA is going to answer that question?
I'm looking at Jen. I believe they're staying here. Yeah, they're going to stay here.
On top of that, could, is there an option to bring their own devices, or is it going to be school-only devices?
If you're sending your own device, there is going to be a business group will not be able to access for the online server, so I would not recommend that.
Okay.
If there is an exposure, what is the quarantining period look like, and there'll still be Google Classroom for kids that have to quarantine?
Yes, so what we have negotiated with our education associations is for all of our educators to maintain their Google Classrooms and update them at least weekly in the event that a student or group of students needs to quarantine. We are currently in the process of signing an agreement with an organization that would provide us with part-time instructors in the event that we need to quarantine students across multiple grade bands, but not whole classes, to provide a continuity of service. Currently, the statute says that if a student has to stay home or is excluded from school for 10 or more days, then they would receive services. We believe this is too much time. We don't want to wait 10 days before the children receive services. So our initial plan is to have a plan so that in the event a child is excluded specifically due to COVID, not general sickness, vacation, or stubbornness, we want to make sure that we are providing a continuity of service to those children.
Can you define said service? Like what, what, what exactly would that service be?
More than likely, it would look like roughly four hours a day of core academic levels of support. The instructor would be working with the children by grade band, so what you might see is a pre-K and kindergarten grade band, a grade one and two grade band due to the looping and the. And then there would be communication between their virtual educator while they are in quarantine or in isolation, and their home teacher to make sure that they are helping keep them on track, so that when they come back, they're not so far behind.
And the vehicle for that would be a virtual, like, or it would just be Google Classroom, or would there be video?
Right, right.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Dr. McDowell. What are you going to do with your extra time now that you don't have to make these presentations anymore? The important ones, for the most part, are September 8th, which is the first day back for the, for the kids. The 8th, 9th, and 10th are all single-session days. There will be no lunch served on any of those days, so you have to plan ahead for that. The Yom Kippur is closed, and there are two virtual back-to-school nights, one for preschool and elementary, one for middle school and high school, which are noted there, and the always-popular board meeting on the 27th. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the June 15th meeting. Is there a motion to do that?
No move.
Second? Is there a second?
I'm trying to turn mine on.
Okay.
Not turning on.
If there's more than two turned on, you know, the third person can.
It's like Jeopardy.
Okay, are there any questions or additions or changes on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. There's no unfinished business at this point in time, and we'll roll right along to the first public comment section. This section is for agenda items only. There'll be another period toward the end of the meeting where you can discuss anything else that you want, but the ground rules will be the same as they've always been. Please stand, come up to the mic so we can hear you, give us your name and address, and try and keep your comments to five minutes or less. So is there anybody that has anything to bring to the board on agenda items?
My name is Joanna Sheets. I live at 117 Newton Ave, Oakland. I'm going to try to keep it quick. For those who don't know me, I'm a board-certified behavior analyst, a mental health professional, a child and medical freedom advocate, who works with some of the most vulnerable populations across a number of states. My family's resided in Collingswood for almost 50 years. I'm a Collingswood graduate, as are all five of my siblings, and thus far, two of my five children have also graduated from Collingswood. My sister was an educator at this Collingswood School District. I currently have relatives there now. I moved to Oakland, I think it was 2001. All five of my children have gone to Oakland Public School. I'm not here to dispute vaccines, at the risk of becoming an anti-vaxer, which I am not. I'm not really here even to dispute masks, though I'm 100% against masking our children. What I'm here to convey is my absolute disgust and the disregard for me as a parent, and my knowledge that I know that what is best for my children and my family. The way I see it, he was a board received by Murphy's mandates. It gives you an out for culpability and decision-making. What troubles me is your complacency and disregard for parental choice. As we know, children have low transmission sickness regarding COVID, and yet we have indoctrinated and instilled in our children adult concerns and fears. I question if we are really doing what is truly best for our children, or makes us feel safe as adults. I watched last night as the superintendent removed his mask to speak. Whether blatantly or inadvertently signaling the functional communication, a speech through mask is muffled and audible and virtually impossible, and yet we are requiring our teachers to wear them. Imagine being a small child, a child with sensory and communication deficits, a child with special needs. Are we doing, are we doing what is best for our children, or what was squelter our fears as adults? I watched for two hours, board members touched and pulled at their masks, and questioned the thought process of believing that a small child will not only keep the mask on, but that the mask will decrease the spread of infection as they can constantly touch it. It makes zero sense to me. Last year, I opted for virtual option for my children, not out of fear of COVID. We all had COVID, we recovered, because I adamantly refuse to allow my children to believe that what is being portrayed in our schools currently is anything normal. I took my daughter into school one day for an IEP testing, and what I observed was disturbing. No giggling, no horseplay, no child voices, no life. Children were masked, muzzled, walking distance in the halls, silent, like indoctrinated robots. This is not existence I want for my children. I will not justify it, I will not make excuses, what I see is neglect and borderline abuse. As a mental health professional, I have a growing concern for what we are doing to our children's emotional and mental health. We are grooming a generation of children taught they have no voice, to shut up and follow directions, to comply and be silent, because that's what we are doing as adults. We are grooming a generation of victims. A generation is going to require deprogramming, a generation indoctrinate with adult fears. The reality is that 2019 to 20, there was a 9% overall decline in childhood deaths, despite your global pandemic. What did increase were the hospitalization visits due to suicide attempts and ideations in adolescents, a 23% increase in fact. This increased to 50.1% in teen and adolescent girls. This falls on us, as parents, as professionals, as educators, we are failing our children. I'm being told this year that I must send my children in person to school, where they are at ages eight and 10, required to wear a mask for six-plus-some hours. I'm trying in my head to understand that if it's a global pandemic, you feel how suffering potentially COVID-positive, stuffing potentially COVID-positive children into classrooms is any different than forcing the seniors back into the senior homes. There should have been a virtual option offered, not just for parents like me who refuse to mask their children, but parents who truly fear and are fear-filled. You can blame Murphy all you want, but I don't see anyone in this room standing up for us as parents, our rights to choose what is best for our children. The NJEA has sold its soul to the devil, and the last time I checked, I don't co-parent with Murphy, the NGA, or the local Board of Education. So this year, I'm forced to do something I never thought I would do, because your blind compliance and complacency has taken away my right as a parent to decide whether or not to send my child in person or not, or whether to subject them to hours of masking or not. I have only one left. I'm officially unenrolling my children from this public education system. I appease and awe. I implore you, for the sake of the parents of the school district, get off the tyrannical teat of the governor and the NGAA and do your jobs. Stand up for our children, stand up for our rights, and our rights as parents, because right now, you as a body do not represent me. I've heard it over and over, as a justification for our negligence, that children are resilient. And I'm here to tell you, if that were emphatically the case, I wouldn't have a job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the, for the comments. Just, just one thing, the, and I don't, not sure whether you're aware of this or not, I would think you probably are, that as board members, elected board members, we are officials of the state of New Jersey, we're required to enforce the rules, regulations, laws of the state of New Jersey, and as such, and that there are regulations that have been promulgated by the governor, we're duty-bound to enforce those regulations. So whether we feel good about it or bad about it is immaterial. Could we say no? Sure we could. I can drive 90 miles an hour in a 60 mile an hour zone, too, as long as I'm prepared to take the consequences. And at this point, I'm just not prepared to take the consequences of bucking the state of New Jersey, but I do appreciate your comments, I understand where you're coming from. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
7.01, the enrollment. Enrollment for June of 2020 was 285. Enrollment for June of 2021 was 271. The school, 7.02, the school safety drill report is presented and is attached in the board agenda. 7.03, no suspensions reported. Point 04, no bullying incidents reported. And 7.05, the child study team report is included in board docs for your review. And 7.06, policies up for a first read. 131, bylaws, policies, and regulations. 16.48 dash point 11, the road forward, COVID-19, health and safety. 2422, comprehensive health and physical education revised. 2467, surrogate parents and resource family parents revised. 3134, assignment of extra duties revised. 3142, non-renewal of non-tenured teaching staff members revised. 3221, evaluation of teachers revised. 3222, evaluation of teaching staff members excluding teachers and administrators revised. 3223, evaluation of administrators excluding principals, vice principals, and assistant principals revised. 3224, evaluation of principals, vice principals, and assistant principals revised. 4125, employment of support staff members revised. 4125, employment of support staff members revised. 4146, non-renewal of non-tenured support staff revised. 5111, eligibility of resident, non-resident students revised. 5116, education of homeless children revised. 6115.01, federal awards and internal controls, allowable ability of costs, new. 6115.02, federal awards, funds, internal controls, mandatory disclosures, new. And 6115.03, federal awards and funds, internal controls, conflict of interest, also new. 6311, contracts for goods or services funded by federal grants revised. School district travel, 6471 revised. 7432, eye protection revised. 8420, emergency and crisis situations revised. 8540, school 8550, meal charges, outstanding food service 8561, procurement procedures for school nutrition revised. And 8600, student transportation, also revised. Section 7.07, review of bylaws. Attached bylaws 143, 155, and 110 for review.
Dr. McDowell, I can kind of like explain the bylaws. If you want, we can do it in the committee of the whole, because I want to kind of explain what happened over the summer, because Mrs. Bushko sent me an email, so.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, over the summer, Mrs. Bushko brought to my attention some of our bylaws, which is how we govern ourselves as a board, need to be tweaked a little bit, because it's been a long time since they've been looked at. So I kind of went through it. I did make some notes on them. I don't know if you guys had a chance to review them. But the first one, policy 110, is basically how we identify ourselves. The current policy lists us as a K through nine school district still. As we know, Oakland is now pre-K to five. So I believe we should change it to pre-K to five, and then we add at the end of that sentence that in that grade six through 12, to Collingswood High School. In the policy 143, there's an entire section about a student rep to the board, which we do already. So I did kind of make notes on the policy. What we do in Collingswood High School, there's a rep from Oakland, a rep from Woodland, and a rep from Oakland. So we can rewrite this, that they're representatives to Collingswood High School, and delete that first paragraph if you're okay with it. Again, all this is online for you.
I just wanted to make it clear that they're representative to the Collingswood Board and not to the Oakland Board.
Right. And then the last one, 155, is where, I guess it's about nine pages, but it's basically all of the committees that you possibly could ever want. So I just kind of wanted to clarify it a little bit, just to say that the president shall appoint board members to serve a one-year term on the committees of the board, and the board committees may be da-da-da-da-da. And then we have them as we need, because right now, we only have three seated annually on a full-time basis, and then negotiations as necessary, all of which are listed there, but it just kind of, the way it reads, it makes it look like we have all these committees, and we really don't. We only have three seated. So if you're okay with that, I'll make that change, and then next month, I'll bring a clean copy of these for you, and then we can file them online. Is everybody okay with all of that?
Okay. And one of these, probably 143,
Yeah.
which defines us.
Yes.
I think that also shows the address of the board office, which still says Kendall Boulevard. That should be corrected, too. One of these things.
Yes, 110. Okay. All right, we'll do that, and I'll have it for you next month.
Can I add something? Sorry, for committee of the whole. I was going to do this back in June, and then I had to miss the meeting, so I didn't get to do it. But I had attended a workshop by the School Boards Association back in early June on public relations, particularly in terms of COVID. So I just wanted to share a few notes from that, if it's helpful, because I think that as a board, we can always do better communicating with the community. So there was just a couple of things. Obviously, a lot of it was about social media. And one of the things that somebody had suggested, which I thought was an interesting idea, and I don't want to add more work to Dr. McDowell. But, so it doesn't necessarily be to be a superintendent's, but it was doing a superintendent's synopsis after the board meeting. So it's kind of like, I guess, like a Facebook Live or live video. So rather than having the, I would say, in addition to a live stream, maybe just a brief, like, three-minute overview of the key things that happen at board meetings, just so that people, if they're busy and don't watch all 90 minutes or so, they have some, you know, key highlights from the meeting. So anyway, I thought that was an interesting idea. There was quite a bit of talk about the liaisons to the various community groups, and I was like, well, that's great, because we do that already. So, for instance, Teresa's liaison for some groups, and I go to the PTA meetings and give an update there. But I just thought it was another, like, nice idea to kind of reach more people and tell them what we're doing here. Other things that they mentioned, obviously, were more student feel-good stories, which Dr. McDowell has started doing since he took over, and in those, like, weekly emails, and having more, like, student success stories. And Ms. Bolden does it, too. So that was just another thing that they suggested that we're already doing, which is great. So just wanted to keep adding to that. And I think that that was the main thing. It was interesting in hearing the other people talking for the other boards that one of the things that their teachers have expressed as well is no new initiatives. So it would seem like that was a theme across many schools during this time, so that was interesting as well. And I think that that's all my notes, but I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Before we give Dr. McDowell something else to do, can we think about this a little bit? Specifically, I'm concerned about the after-the-meeting.
Obviously, it's just a suggestion, just like, just talking.
All right, we'll talk about it further.
Yeah, absolutely. So we shared prior to the summer that we were in the process of partnering with a Haddon Township Shared Service Agreement around communication. So that professional has started working with us. She's going to help us construct a comprehensive communication strategy that we're going to be bringing to the board for review to really kind of strike that balance. And some of the components that you brought up would be included in that comprehensive strategy.
I have something on, kind of somewhat related. Beth Ann, I emailed you earlier about the community link for the livestream, and you said, "Public can come to the library or send comments in advance for the board." What's the vehicle for doing that? Like, how can the public submit comments ahead of time?
On that little bar, they can email it to me, and then I would distribute it to the full board. That was a compromise, because we couldn't figure the interaction. Obviously, we're in public, so it's a public meeting. People can come, but we didn't want people who were uncomfortable coming in public to not be able to send comments to the board if they want it to be heard. So you didn't receive any. Yesterday, Collingswood, I believe, received one. But upon receipt, I would just forward to the whole, sorry, to the whole board, so that you guys knew what the comments were. And then in the minutes, I would just summarize, you know, basically, who we got a comment from and basically what, you know, a quick sum-up of the comment.
Okay, and that's explained to the public pretty well? Like, they see that?
I mean, I think so. They would, I just said in the email blurb that any questions have to be submitted the day of the board meeting by 12:00 noon, and it's my email address.
Okay, awesome.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, anyone else?
That's fine. I'll just talk loud. I wondered, there's been a lot of great usage of text and email when it comes to communicating. Could our board meetings be part of that, too? Any kind of text alerts to community members to let them know about our meetings? That's the question. Denise is great at putting it on Facebook, but, you know.
Okay, I guess we can do that. I don't see any real problem with it. But our meetings aren't a secret. I mean, we meet the third Tuesday every month. We have a sign out front that says when the next meeting is. I hope it says tonight's meeting. Maybe not, because it's still summertime. It's, yeah, we're not trying to keep it a secret. We're happy to have everybody know about it and come. So I guess they're going to do that, or look into it. We can do that.
Yeah, we have the ability to do it, obviously, because everybody's basically getting the symptom checker every day at 6:45 a.m. I think lately, we've kind of pulled back on a lot of that, because people are just, it's from the schools, from the school, everybody is, you know. So I guess we want to, I guess we can talk to the PR lady, like, how much we want to do via text, because we don't want to annoy families with the daily
That's what I was going to say. So some of the feedback that we got from community members across the gamut was striking the appropriate balance in the reminder space, and then trying to be very targeted, very specific, especially if it elicited an action. So if it's FYI, individuals have asked for email. If it is something that is time-sensitive, that requires an action, text would be appropriate, but not getting texts every single day, because then it gets tuned out.
Yep, agreed.
Can I ask a question? Who are we going to send this email to?
Email or text?
Who's us?
I'm guessing parents would be my assumption.
Just the parents, so the general public won't have the advantage of that.
If they sign up for our texts or email alerts, right? Isn't there a vehicle where community members can sign up for school alerts?
Yeah, that's right.
There was like a postcard that went out several months ago.
And I know Ms. Bolden puts it in the emails usually, but it's just, you know, when this one is coming up, there are a lot. I got a few people saying, "Oh, I forgot. Oh, I didn't know. Oh, can I watch it on Zoom?" You know, so. Yeah, that's what I'd suggest. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think just to explain it on my through bill is the amount of media that people are receiving right now is so quick to forget about stuff. You get an email, I mean, I have four email addresses. I get about 250 emails a day through stuff. Then there's also, like, Facebook and Twitter and the other things, phone calls, text messages. It's really quick to dismiss and forget something. So for me, the more ways of reaching out to the community, the more they're actually going to understand, because, I mean, there's so much stuff happening. It's easy to forget things. So that's kind of why I think there's better reason to have more vehicles to communicate to the community.
Okay.
Can I just make a request? Like, the stuff that's coming for board, can we make sure we're using the new emails that we were given? Because I'm not getting stuff at mine. Yeah.
Oh, really?
Messages and stuff constantly come into my other one and not to work.
You want to know everything that's going on? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
We'll update the distribution list to make sure that it's.
Okay.
One more thing. We've changed the committee situation. Can we, at the next board meeting or the following one, just see what everybody's opinion is about how this is going and how this is working and what we think of it? I mean, we did change it. It was quick. We're now got a lot of other things going on, and then we'll come back to it. We'll do what we're doing, but we'll revisit it, and we'll see what everybody's opinions are, because we still have options. You know, and if this isn't working, we can try something else. And if it is, and Dr. McDowell also had offered to me at the last meeting an option of what they're doing over at Collingswood. They're doing theirs virtually, are they not? Their committee meetings and, yeah, where people come and go, and they're able to have more people come in and speak to the board, because they don't have to come and sit for 20 minutes, 45 minutes, or whatever it is. But like I said, we'll talk about this, but keep your mindset about what's going on. It's new. We're not big on new sometimes, and see how we feel about it, and we'll revisit it. Everybody okay? Sound like an idea, Bill?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Thank you.
The Collingswood virtual meetings still leave a little bit to be desired timewise. Beth Ann changed the times. She expanded them, because some of the meetings were running over.
Right.
Now they're running over the expanded time. So if you're coming to the third meeting as an outsider, you can be hanging around for quite a while.
Because, you know, there may need to be some shifting. You may have to change, and, you know, we're all flexible like this. We're a great group to work with. Let's just see what happens in the next couple. See how everybody feels.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Anyone else? I was afraid you were reaching for that mic again. You're just turning it off. Okay, is there a motion to come out of committee of the whole?
So moved.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we're back in general session with item nine, which is the liaison reports. Denise, you're first, I think.
I am. So for the PTA report, again, I apologize for missing the June meeting, but as you know, we do have some new officers. And Karen Williams-Marcer, who is here tonight, is our new PTA president, so I'm very excited to have her. The PTA calendar is back and being printed, so hopefully, we'll have that the first week of school. The kids did some artwork for it, so I'm very excited to have that after a year off last year. PTA will be hosting coffee and muffins for new parents on the first day of school. So it'll be two different times, one for pre-K parents, another for K through five. And PTA will also be hosting an ice cream social back by the snack stand on Friday, September 17th at 6:30. So more information to come about that. And I have a PTA update from the Collingswood High School PTA. Just that their mom sale will be on September 18th from 8 a.m. through 11 a.m. or until sold out. So go get your flowers and support the PTA. And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Denise. Does anybody have any questions for her? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to Teresa for a MACAC.
Gone. Okay. Oh, MACAC is tonight, maybe it is breaking in. On the agenda, they're requesting facility usage for gym nights. They're also sponsoring the Halloween event and Night Park, and they're going to be working with the PTA on assemblies for the coming year, and that is all.
Okay, thanks, Teresa. Any questions? Okay, Collingswood had their meeting last night, similar to ours. There was the brief presentation on the opening of school, which is the same type of thing that we heard. Oh, there's virtual back-to-school nights for the middle school and the high school on September 29th. There were public comments, a number of them, that were pro-Ancon on masks and lunch periods. Their enrollment figures, they're down as well as we are. Collinswood is down about 23 students from, uh, 2021 back to 2020. Uh, they also approved the Power Plus translation, uh, folks, that is on our agenda as well. They approved an attorney for legal services in the area of real estate. They approved, uh, high school field trips. They approved Honk Junior as, as, I'm sorry, as a middle school musical.
What is it called?
Honk Junior, H-O-N-K, junior. I don't know either. But I'm sure it'll be an outstanding program, if you wanna say it. They approved contract with the Camden County College for extended education with 18 to 20-year-old, 18 to 21-year-old group. They approved numerous hires, retirements, resignations, and transfers. Uh, they had the first reading of numerous policies and regulations, uh, mostly the same ones that we had. And, uh, they adjourned at 8:43. And that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, Bill, just a quick question. The, um, the drop in student enrollment, is that district wide, that number we reported?
Yes, that's total, total for Collinswood District.
Hey, Bill, the comments about, you said mask, for sun mask, how did they go? Were they like 50/50, wore one side and did the other?
I would've kept notes if, if I knew there was gonna be a test. I, I don't know. I would say it was probably mostly pro-mask, but, uh, I, I don't know.
That's scarce.
There were, um, there were about a dozen, um, community members that spoke. Two, uh, were against the mask, 10 were for.
Okay, that's a good count, of course. Okay, the Oakland Education Foundation. Therese, you're back on.
I don't have any update. They are planning their fall meeting.
Good report. Thank you. Okay, we go to the Business Administrator Board Secretaries' report.
All right, this evening I have, um, your, all of your June and July financial statements. So, um, I've got your, in 10.01 is your monthly budget transfers for June and July. In 10.02 are your board secretaries and treasurer's reports, as well as your cash reports for both months, June and July. And 10.03 is a listing of the final June 2021, listing of purchase orders, and then your, uh, purchase orders that I issued in the months of July and August. And then in 10.04 is a listing of the warrants, um, for July and August. And that is it. Thank you.
Okay, paragraph 11, finance facilities and shared services. Therese.
Hi, so tonight we're asking for your approval for, uh, 11.01, which is the approval of transfers. Uh, 11.02 is the board secretary certification of note over expenditures. 11.03, board certification of note over expenditures. 11.04 is, uh, the approval of the secretary and treasurer's reports, as just reported by Ms. Holman. 11.05 are the purchase orders for June and July. 11.06 are the mark approvals, um, as just presented. 11.07 is a recommendation, uh, to approve Gloucester County Special Services School District to provide a full-time instructor for a special education student for the 2022 school year. 11.08 is a recommendation to approve Gloucester County Special Services School District to, for an auxiliary teacher, uh, for two hours a week, um, for special education students. 11.09, uh, is to approve the following resolution. Uh, the Department of Ed has notified our district that it is eligible for funding as part of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act formula subgrant. And, uh, in order to receive that, we need, uh, the approval of our application for the funds, which are, um, detailed here. 11.10, uh, is a recommendation to approve the following staff who paid out of the Elementary and Secondary Education Grant for the 2022 school year. 11.11 is to approve Power Plus translations for providing translation services on an as-needed basis, um, according to the attached rates for the next school year. 11.12 is recommendation to approve, uh, the Business Office Manual containing standard operating procedures and internal control procedures as attached. 11.13 is, uh, a first of three use of facilities, uh, recommendations for, uh, the first is for Oakland Collinswood Travel Basketball, to use the gym for practice and games for the fall season, which is August 1st to November 1st, on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Um, and there is an agreement to exclude Fridays where OMA SAC is using the gym for gym nights. 11.14 is a facility usage request from OMA SAC for, uh, their gym nights, which are all detailed here from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. for the school year. 11.15 is use of facility request for OMA SAC for the over-30 basketball open sport, which would be every Tuesday evening from 7 to 9, beginning September 8th through June 15th. And, uh, that is it, so we're looking for approval of items 11.01 through 11.15.
Very good. Was there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, I, I don't want to start any fights, or problems, or concerns, but OMA SAC is, is making requests for the full year. Our policy says you may make the request for, for three-month periods. Uh, OMA SAC obviously is number one in, in getting the usage, but I think we've got to restrict their usage to the, uh, the same timeframes that, uh, our policy recalls for. So they'll have to make that request every three months.
This is specifically for the over-30 basketball, right?
No, for both.
Or the gym nights as well?
Gym nights as well.
Is there a precedent that, I mean, the PTA does a similar thing?
Yeah, we've always given OMA SAC the gym nights for the whole year, since I've been here.
Only because the frequency is not.
It's once a month.
I understand your point about the basketball, because it's weekly, but the frequency of the gym nights is, is it monthly or less than that?
Gym nights is once, once a month, and I think the last one probably is even in May.
It's in March.
Yeah.
March 26th.
So it's six nights.
I'm just wondering what, I mean, I just remember the precedent for that being this.
Well, our precedent changed last, or the year before last, when we're never.
The question is, then, I, I think then we have to, I don't know if we, forgive me, receive all the, we usually get a calendar for PTA activities too, don't we?
I haven't, did you get anything? Yeah, I haven't seen it, but.
Yeah, it's not a problem for me, but you know what we went through two years ago? When, when it was brought up that, oh, you're treating him different and you're treating him. And, and that's a problem. OMA SAC is number one. I mean, OMA SAC is gonna get it. If they put out the calendar and it says here, 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 and here, I, I can, can't see any possible problem with that. But if they make the request now for the full year, somebody is gonna come back to us and say, "Oh, you did it for OMA SAC. How come you can't do it for us?"
And I, I think that's a fair point, given some of the other decisions we made, uh, in, in regards to the request. So I, I think that's, that's fair and reasonable.
There's no compensation involved, it's just a matter of paperwork.
Yeah, right, there's no charge. Uh, they'll have first choice, so.
I think, I think in, in, not to speak for anybody from OMA SAC, but I, I remember hearing, you know, just to get it all done at once, so that we're looking ahead, but.
Understand.
It's different, I mean, we were talking about sports, and also the frequency of the first request on the agenda was three nights a week. You know, and I, and I agree that to be equitable to all other groups in usage, we should, you know, be adhering to the policy for that. So I agree, so where, where do we wanna go from here?
So I can.
Go back to them and ask for quarterly?
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll change item 1115 to amend the approval to a season at a time, and then in, where they list their dates, I believe the next season starts after November 1st, according to the facilities, um, request form, so I'll put it.
So they'll only be approving October 22nd, for gym.
Yep.
And then as far as over-30 basketball, that would be since November 1st. I think that's fair.
Yeah, so I say.
Exactly. No, I think that's a really valid point. And I don't think, you know, I mean, again, we're, as a committee, just trying to be as equitable as possible with this space. But I think, you know, people are just trying to get, check things up a little, so.
Yeah, equity doesn't enter into it when, uh, you have two groups.
No, when you're not, yeah, yeah, no, I agree. Yep.
Okay.
That's why I was trying to listen to three conversations.
Okay, so the motion is to approve it with the amended dates that, uh.
For both items, 14 and 15.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
So we need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I, you seconded?
Yeah.
Thank you, have some.
Uh, okay, on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Riley? Mrs. Falpel? Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Fink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, paragraph 12, Curriculum Committee. Denise, you're on.
12.01, there are no field trips at this time. 12.02 is, um, seeking approval for the revised calendar for 2021, 2022. Um, the main change in this was, um, the, and the last day of school. And that's it. Thanks.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items 12.01 and 12.02? Okay, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there any mandate about field trips? I haven't heard anything except that there are any plans.
There's no mandates. Um, what we have shared with schools is that, um, we'll look at each field trip request on a case-by-case basis, because some of them are outside, some of them, um, are not. Uh, some of them are in tight spaces and some are not, so we're gonna look at it on a, on a case-by-case.
So they're allowed to request?
So, yeah, they're, they're definitely allowed to request.
Yeah, just, just aside, Collinswood High School approved some, uh, uh, at least one field trip. I didn't write down what they were for, but there was an approval in there for Collinswood High School for.
The band competition, um, so it's a qualifying event, it's an outdoor event, uh, for them to, uh, to qualify to be able to go for the state competition.
Okay. Any other questions? On a roll call.
Mrs. Riley? Mrs. Falpel? Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Fink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, Personnel Committee, Rich is not here. Uh, you wanna try that? Personnel. Sure. Uh, you're so agreeable.
I'm so agreeable. All right, so item 13.01 is, um, the hiring of a elementary long-term sub slash replacement teacher. 13.02 is the same, it's a replacement teacher. 13.03 is approving student psychology practicum placements. I'm sorry, was that? 13.04 is, uh, approving a revised contract, uh, for a teacher. 13.05 is approving, um, summer ESY program, um, a staff who worked it. Uh, 13.06 is approving, um, time for a staff member who came in, um, for the summer, uh, preschool transition teams. 13.07 is approving, uh, staff members who worked on summer IEPs. 13.08 is, um, uh, we're changing the pay rate for a permanent substitute who will be in the building each day. Um, and 13.09 are the subrates that have been revised for the school year, hoping to attract some, some subs. 13.10 is approving, um, a list of sub-teachers, tutors, uh, and sub-nurse, and there is no travel expense, uh, request at this time.
Okay, thanks Beth Ann. Okay, is there a motion to approve items, uh, 13.01 through 13.10?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, any questions?
Yeah, I got a question on 03.
Go ahead.
About the psychological, is that something we do, is that something we do on a regular basis? Bringing somebody from PCOM, or whoever? That's, that's the college they're coming from. Is, is that something we do, like bringing us an intern, and what's their job function? Help out the school psychologist?
Uh, yeah, we've been doing it in Collinswood for years, so they are able to sit in and work with, um, the school psychologist and teacher. So they get their practicum experience and they help us out as well.
Just practical experience. I'm just more worried about bringing in a graduate student, trying to prove out one of their, well, doing thesis experiments on children, that's all.
Yeah, they, and they usually, when they come in, they're all, they're working under the other, um, psychologist, and under that person's, um, certificate, so they're helping, but not, yeah.
All right, sounds good.
Any other questions? Okay, on a roll call, please.
Mrs. Riley? Mrs. Falpel? Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Fink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, paragraph 14, Dr. McDowell, you're on.
Uh, we are seeking the approval for 14.01, uh, policies and regulations to be abolished. Uh, 1648, restart and recovery plan. 1648.02, remote learning options for families. 1648.03, restart and recovery full-time remote. And 1649, Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. 14.02, the 2021-22 District Professional Development and Mentoring Plan, which is, uh, both of these documents are attached in your board docs. Uh, 14.03, uh, there is no HIB report, uh, at this time. And we would be seeking approval for items 14.01 and 14.02.
Okay, is there a motion for that? Seconded. Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, any questions? On a roll call, please.
Mrs. Riley? Mrs. Falpel? Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Fink?
Yes.
Mrs. Marmian?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, paragraph 15 is our second public discussion, uh, period. This is for any item that you wanted to bring to the board, uh, but with the same ground rules, please stand, give us your name and address, and try and keep your comments to five minutes or less. So is there anybody has anything to bring to the board at this point?
Um, so, um, my name's Karen Williams, I'm from, um, 124 East Federalwood Avenue. And I just wanted to ask, um, I'm the PTA president this year, and I was a little confused with the, how to, um, do the facility requests? Is that all online? It's okay, because I was a little confused what you were saying, like, you have to do it quarterly rather than for the whole year, because it seemed like that's what we've done in the past. Um, so I just was.
Up until two years ago, yes.
Would that be clarified and put online? So, I know how to.
Yeah, it, it is online, if you go in there, you can find it, uh.
That has to be, is there like a certain deadline that it has to be in by?
Yes, before the, before the event, 60 days. If you go on the website, under, I think it's under facilities. Like, you on the Oakland website, like, where the menu is, you get the blue screen with all the, the myriad of things. Go to the, uh, facilities use, and it'll be a dropdown, there should be a request form. It's about four or five pages, it has all the instructions and the timelines and everything are on there.
So I, I'm in the process of getting calendar prepared, and I have some events that'll be happening within those 60 days. So I didn't know if like that's, if there's a conflict, like, with the facility, like requesting facilities.
And you also have some other well-passed too, that you wanna be publishing.
Yes.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not sure how to proceed.
Well, what hap, I'm sorry, what happens is you would send that to Mrs. Bolden, and like, she knows, um, she'll look at it before she even sends it to the board office, but all that gets put on the school calendar. Usually is not a conflict, a lot of your stuff's during the day. I know your big events, um, like the talent show and stuff like that, we know, like, if you're having it, and so that, we wouldn't approve anything that would conflict with that date.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I'd put them all on a calendar.
Yeah, I just wanna get the stuff on a calendar.
Yeah.
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's not that big of a deal with the requests, and it wouldn't, like, conflict.
No, and if it's easier, you can say, you can email it, you know, so.
Okay.
If we could get Ms. Bolden to weigh in? Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
This is a facility, I need the OMASAC and PTA events on the calendar for the year. So there's school-related functions, not all of the OMASAC, just the OMASAC events that have to do with power students and power gym night, not the regatta basketball, not the play, not, something like that. The PTA, because if not, that gets really clearly, like, I need to know what age group it is.
Where?
We don't want anybody else to talk on that, because all of it is...
No, I, I, I agree, what I was gonna share with you, Karen, uh...
What I was gonna share with you after the meeting was, the three of us were gonna sit down and actually talk. Um, those cosponsored events or school events, they fall under a different category. Right. Right.
Yeah, OMASAC and the PTA, I would show everything on a calendar, whether they have approval for it or not. Uh, the, the approval is kind of a, uh, just a routine, uh, peremptory thing. But I, I'd show them all on a calendar for whatever date you wanna use.
So I'm just a little confused, though, with what we approved tonight and then what. I mean, obviously, are we still going with the approval of...
We, we've approv-
In those seasons?
Yes, we've approved it for three months, but they're issuing the, the school calendar that's gonna come out and it's gonna show dates that are more than three months down the road.
But if there's, if there's, uh, depends on their, their, their school events or not, if there's school events, given that not being approved, if somebody else coming in requesting on top of it, it's not the standard, and then outside, we're still looking at, because we forgot the PTA, I would like all the PTA and OMASAC school related, not the calendar for the year, so I know what's going on, and I can get that information out well ahead of time, or, you know.
Can we rethink?
It's a matter of getting the paperwork in after ninety days.
Well, no, can I, can I ask a question, though? Can we rethink the policy so that cosponsored events we could do for the year?
That's, that's a bit different, that's a different category than an external group.
Right, well, so can we revise the policy then?
Would be a local school-based decision, it wouldn't be affected through this process.
It changes, I think, the policy that is current, which is like the outside, that is, is not talking about the cosponsored events, and I just wanted to clarify.
But I think, we've had, we had three OMASAC, or we had two OMASAC requests, and I mean, and one is...
So the one that's cosponsored is the one that...
One is cosponsored, and that has to be, forgive me for just not having a memorandum, but it has to be spelled out in the paperwork.
I don't think it goes in the same paperwork, but that's what they're saying.
If that plays a role, it's a different thing. Oh, no, no, I, I wasn't saying that, I was just saying that, that is a cosponsored event, I mean, the first category, but the over thirty basketballs...
Yeah, that's different.
Is not a cosponsored.
Yeah, on the first class, it's all Oakland people, all of the students, that's like, the first category, the second one, all like sports, stuff like that, because we don't wanna put them too far in advance, we don't wanna do the S P T field, but, you know, I guess the seasonal thing, but not for schools, I mean, that's like, calm it down.
So just to clarify, that would change what we said earlier, I just wanna make sure I understand, so we wanted to amend the travel basketball request to be by season.
Season, yeah.
But we're not going to go by season for gym night.
Right, right.
So we're...
That's how I understand it.
Changing what we said earlier.
That's what I think they're saying.
I mean, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what we're...
Because if the gym nights are the cosponsored events, they're not the same thing, so they don't fall under the outside event thing, so they should have been separated. We need to check, we need to check the policy to make sure that it's really clearly spelled out, especially if it's only internet, for the people to download it and not be thoroughly confused about what they have to do, and do I have to put in for six months, three months, what do I have to do?
Yeah, I don't think cosponsored is defined.
It, it doesn't say, I'm, I'm looking at, cosponsored's not defined.
Right.
Um, it, well, it'd say, Class One, it says, "A group made up of Oakland Public School students and activities scheduled for the benefit of the students are a borough endorsed or sponsored event, which is insured by the Borough of Oakland, there's no fee," but it doesn't say anything about when, you know, that they don't have to submit, right?
Many other groups in town, you know, and, so, because we don't have a borough wrecked sports group, and, you know, but, if we didn't, you know, uh, again, trying to be fair to every group, but also it makes, doesn't make a ton of sense to have PTA submitting things that are already published for approval. So, all right, where does that leave this meeting, then, I guess?
Well, we, we amended the motion for OMASAC for the one gym night, so if the meeting's not concluded, so if you're going back on what you just voted on, then we are gonna have to probably...
Make a new motion.
Bring, make a new motion and have a separate item be voted on to correct the one that you already did. So that I have it right.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm probably a little bit tense, but I fail to see the, the problem in publishing the calendar that shows gym night once a month and, and the nights. Uh, the technicality that happens behind the scenes is that every three months, they have to put in a new request. Uh, they'd, they'd be number one on the list, so barring some sort of catastrophe, there's no problem. And worst-case scenario, if something does happen, if the, the gym burns down, uh, you notify everybody that gym night on September the day is now canceled, but, um...
So if, if I'm understanding, basically then, they, they can request it for the year, and they'll get it for the year, but we're gonna approve it officially every, is that what I'm, under, am I understanding correctly?
That's mine.
So they can, they can request it, in essence, for the year, they're gonna get it for the year, but we're not officially approving that until...
Well, they put it on the calendar for the year, and...
And I just wanna make sure I understand what we're all trying to...
And they just put the paperwork in.
So if we did it that way, though, what would stop another cosponsored event from possibly conflicting with...
It's on the calendar.
The Board of Education, they, whoever it is, still has to come back to us for approval.
We can deny that, request that would conflict.
No, I think just for administrative purposes, though, if Ms. Bolden needs to know the dates of these, when these events are happening, there needs to be a request more than ninety days in advance, so they, I think, if they get their request in, in August for the year, then at least she knows when they are, and the PTA knows when they are, and then...
So, ultimately, just let me, I wanna provide a bit of clarity, so all...
The person who really controls the calendar is...
I just pushed a button. The person who really controls the calendar is the school. So the school really controls the calendar, and then based on the availability from, uh, the school, that then determines the facilities requests that come in to the board. So all of the items that would be located on the calendar, um, that are school-specific have, uh, priority, so...
Right, I understand that, so my question is, though, if, if OMASAC is only requesting gym night, like, at some point, Ms. Bolden needs to know the whole year, right? So that if another group is requesting facilities, they're not going to Ms. Bolden to request facilities, they're going to whoever the facilities people are, for, for basketball or color guard or baseball or whatever, right? So if there are specific cosponsored events that the school has, we need some sort of protocols, and that Ms. Bolden has those dates September one.
I'm gonna be...
You know what I mean? I don't know, I'm just trying to...
Now, when I read this, maybe I'm just over, trying to oversimplify this, because this has never been a problem before. It says on the form, "Fill out the request for use of the school facility form sixty days in advance." It doesn't say it can't be for a whole calendar year. We did that in Finance Committee, because we didn't want somebody coming in and using the building for the whole year, we wanted it to be available for children. That application of not doing the whole year thing, I don't think should apply to PTA. She can get her calendar in now, knowing, you know, we'll waive the sixty-day thing because everybody's kinda new and it's been COVID, but we put, it doesn't say that we don't approve for a whole calendar year. So I, as a board, you can say, sixty days in advance, again, OMASAC, like Adam got, has paperwork in, and, and the travel soccer got their paperwork in sixty days in advance, sometimes, well, he got it in way in advance, so he, they met the sixty-day requirement, right? But it doesn't say anything that can't do it for a whole year, that was just us doing that. That's not what the policy says, so...
The policy doesn't need to change.
I don't think so, unless you wanna change it, you know, I just think...
The policy, the policy needs to change, that's, that's not the way it reads right now. Uh, I, I think we're overcompliment, uh, conflating the, the matter. General know what the, what the request is for OMASAC, she already knows for this year. Every year, she's gonna get that request, when the, when the PTA calendar is written up, she's gonna put those dates on the calendar, whether they're approved or not, because the approval is a technicality where they have to come to the board, but we can apply or comply with the, uh, regulation that we have now, that they come to the board every three months for approval. It's not like we're gonna say, "No, you can't use it for the winter term" or something, it's, it's, you, you would know who it was, you put them on the calendar. It, it, the fact that you don't have official approval, to me, is immaterial.
Well, I don't think it's, I think they're very complicated, that, but, it just, it just...
Well, what happens if we, what happens if you put it on the calendar, we'd say you can't have that date?
You just go through, like, a bunch of names, and I'm worried about her, where PTA usually is told first, but now that it's not on that facilities calendar, and somebody does it yet, and another organization comes in, and somebody forgets that this was on there, I just get shit another room for error, where now I'm gonna have to go explain this to organizations, oops, we forgot, PTA did request for a year, but they only approved them for nine days, but they didn't put it on the facilities calendar, and this one actually definitely got approved.
You, you write it on the calendar for the full year, the only technicality is that OMASAC has to come to us every three months and say, "Here's the official request."
I don't write the calendar, I'll tell the other facilities department, and it doesn't go until it's approved, so if it's not there, I can't.
Can I just make a suggestion? If it's, if it's defined, uh, if we were to change the policy to say, you know, cosponsored events, right? That's the, as Dr. McDowell said, the school is in charge of the calendar, so the school would decide if it's cosponsored event or not. And if that's the case, then they can submit whatever they want. Again, to your point, Bill, the committee and the board have the right to prefer to deny any request. Right, but I think that the, the precedent makes a lot more sense to do the year calendar for cosponsored events.
It didn't make more sense the last time we had the soccer club, they came back and complained about it.
That's not the PTA.
It's a completely separate...
You're right, it's not the PTA.
Now, because, now, because it's, because it exists because of a lack of, you know, there is school soccer, that's the whole point.
Okay, if we rewrite the policy to, yeah, if we rewrite the policy to reflect that, that's okay.
But I thought we already changed that it was the recreational stuff was the stuff that we were concerned with two years ago, not the school stuff.
Yes, that's why we have the Class One and the Class Two.
We've never had this discussion or problem before.
It, it reads as seasons, so I guess you would, I guess indicate...
So don't you just put in one sentence that says cooperative with the school, things can be annual?
So I'm looking at the website right now, and it's actually two different forms, one for the school group, which I guess would be a PTA or OMASAC gym night, and then non-school group. The school group doesn't even have the policy attached to it, all it has is the form, so the non-school group has the policy attached to it.
That's the one I thought, was the one that had the sixty days and the, and all that, but not the school stuff.
Right.
Would it be, would it, would it help you if we just, with the school group, it just says that you're going to use the facility for the year, and you wanna book ahead of time, you've gotta get your information to her by the first of September, and you'll book it, okay, we still have to put the paperwork in, or you can say, and let's do it that way, that if you're gonna use the facility for a year, Ms. Bolden has to be told by the first of September that this is what's gonna happen, and that way they can get it all booked in, will know what's going on and what's happening, and then it will be in the, in the policy, you won't have to worry about the issues of somebody else coming in. Sound like a plan?
But the question is, though, getting it on the facilities calendar, right? It's not just getting it on a PTA calendar. So the facilities calendar is a calendar that groups can go into our website and see who's using this, the, the facility on a particular day.
Is that done by a maintenance or by, by, by...
Right, once, what happens is, after you guys approve everything, we sign off on all of it, and it goes to the Buildings and Grounds Department, and they put it on the, the school calendar.
I think, for one part, it doesn't say anything about facilities, but the school stuff and, you know, that's...
So, que- question, Beth Ann, um, is there anything precluding all school-sponsored events to be, whether they be with my signature or your signature, to be placed on the facilities calendar without this whole process?
No, not that I know of, just that we've always, they've had this process, they've always had the paperwork process, both districts.
For school events?
Yes. And it's not as big as an issue in Oakland as, has been in Collinswood, but I can't even tell you how many times, like, teachers will run up, like, "I'm having an assembly, if something's happening today," and nobody knew about it, right?
Well, I'm having this.
Well, you didn't fill out the, I didn't know that we needed A V equipment, I didn't know that we needed maintenance people, because nobody filled out the form to get it on the calendar, and anybody, you know, it, it happens a lot, so they, forms have been developed by both school districts, so we even hold our teaching staff members account, like, the school, I guess, whatever, the, the school form, because we do have teachers complete them when they, they wanna have stuff, and principals fill them out, so we get stuff on the official calendar, because otherwise, maintenance doesn't know what's going on, we don't know what's going on.
Can Jen get the dates and just put it on the calendar as a principal? It's gotta go to maintenance.
It's, no, it's gotta go to maintenance.
I mean, like, if she filled out the form to do that, that's what I'm...
I guess that's what I'm saying, like, if, if I...
And this is the form that we're trying to approve. No, I, no, 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 what I mean is, like, I'm talking about, like, the OMASAC stuff, like, if she has the dates, because she's putting it on her master calendar, can she, as the principal, saying, "This is a school-sponsored event," can she, can she fill something that says...
Yes, she can fill...
Just put it on the calendar.
Yes, she can fill out the form and send it, yes.
And just say, "Put it on the calendar."
And, yeah, she can.
And just because, not that I wanna give you the word, but I'm just thinking, like, to avoid the confusion of the dates.
But I would, I would say, based on the school events versus, I mean, I... OMASAC is cosponsored, but I, I, PTA is different than OMASAC.
Right, right.
So I would leave OMASAC in the OMASAC bucket, and have them, you know, come to the board, because their insurances are different, everything's different. PTA is a pseudo-school agency, you know, insurance-wise and everything else, so they're, they're diff, I, I'm okay with the PTA filling out the school form with Jen and sending in it and getting it done, but I think OMASAC's gotta stay in the OMASAC bucket. Because I believe that's how it's always been done, it's just this year, we got, I guess because of COVID, everybody's sent in annual requests, because they just, everybody wants to get in before the, you know, they wanna get and use up the building and get it on the calendar before everybody else, so...
Beth Ann, on the website, on the request for facility use, it does say, uh, the form has to be submitted to the building principal thirty days prior to the scheduled event.
For the school, that's the school one?